How many weeks? Has it been what, five, six, maybe? It's not that large. I mean, it's grueling being stuck at home, but I mean, it's at the most, maybe let's say it's two months. Um, I'm thinking the idea behind um other governmental agencies or factions calling in those tax amendments, because that has everything to do with the year prior and leading up to, rather than, you know, moving forward. That's just my understanding and my way of understanding it, and that's how it was, you know, some years ago. But I mean, things could have changed. Now, I'm almost certain that companies, had they not, if they're not doing what they're supposed to do, uh, the two months in between that we're dealing with right now is not going to make that big of a difference. But that's just my opinion.
Uh, Jake, Henry, that's a good question. Um, I think we're gonna follow up. We're up to the seven o'clock. Jake, if you could finish out your committee and then we can start the council meeting.
Yes, can I have a motion on this, uh, on this bill seventeen twenty?
I make a motion that we send this bill seventeen twenty to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, quick, um, Jones, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Um, council member White?
Aye.
Council member McBride?
Aye.
Council member?
Was that Hammond? Did you just say Thomas Morgan?
Oh, okay. Um, council member Hammond? Which one?
Could you call again? We can't hear you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, John, I'm sorry.
Okay. Council member White, I have aye. Council member McBride, I have aye. Council member Thomas Morgan, is she?
Aye.
Okay. Council member?
Aye.
Or aye?
Okay, moves to the full council favorably. I will call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Tashka.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, everybody, we're gonna go ahead and start the council meeting. Um, I'll, I'll make a formal announcement to that. Uh, just so everybody, just to remind everybody, please put yourself on mute if you're not speaking. And um, I know, uh, Clerk Jones will be, uh, will, will do roll call on everything and then we'll go down the line if anybody has questions as well. So, um, all right. Let's go ahead and get started. Uh, good evening. The Monday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty, uh, common council meeting is now in session. Due to the executive order by the Indiana, uh, Governor Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council meeting is being held legally, uh, by way of virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams app. So, I want to thank the public and those who can join us. Uh, we want everybody to be safe. That's why we're meeting this way. Um, with that, Ms. Jones, would you please, uh, do the roll call?
Yes. Council member Davis? Council member Davis?
I'm here. I'm sorry, I'm clicking. But I'm here.
Council member McBride?
Present.
Member Warner?
Here.
Council member Tashka?
Here.
Council member Niskoski?
Here.
Council member Thomas Morgan?
Present.
Council member Hammond?
Present.
Vice President White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. We'll move on to special business, um, like we did the last council meeting. I will ask for a motion, two motions, uh, so we can suspend the rules in here, both, uh, first readings and second and third readings all tonight. Um, would someone like to make that motion?
I would like to make the motion to suspend the rules.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor, uh, Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Yes. Council member Davis? Council member Davis?
Aye.
Council member McBride?
Aye.
Council member Warner?
Aye.
Council member Tashka?
Can I, can I, uh, make a point of clarification?
Yes.
Which, or, 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 uh, ask a question, which, which rule are we suspending? Do we have to make two motions here? Attorney Palmer?
Yeah, excuse me, yes, we have to make two motions. The first motion is to hear all three readings of the bill on the same night. When that passes, then there should be a motion to suspend the rules to advance the first readings on the agenda, so we can get all the first readings done and then go to the Committee of the Hall and then third readings.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. My, my vote is aye.
Council member Niskoski?
Aye.
Also, council member?
Aye.
We do need us.
Um, I'll move to suspend the rules in order to advance first readings tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Yes. Council member McBride?
Aye.
Member Warner?
Aye.
Council member Tashka? Council member Tashka?
Aye.
Council member Niskoski?
Aye.
Council member Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Council member Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Council member Davis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Now, we'll have an update from Jeff Ray, uh, the COVID nineteen response coordinator, to give us an update on, uh, where we are with this pandemic. Mr. Ray, are you there? If you would, please state your name and address.
I am Jeff Ray, present CEO, Sappan Regional Chamber, office is at one oh one North Michigan Street downtown South Bend. Uh, welcome, or thank you for, uh, letting me join you this evening. First, want to just clarify that you can see my screen.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Good. I promise, uh, I'm not gonna go through every slide, but I want to give you a chance to, uh, see a high level overview of some of what's going on and, and also give you a chance to answer a few questions. I recognize you have other business on your agenda, so I'll try to be, um, as brief as, as you need me to be. Just a, a quick high level reminder, we executed an agreement in the last couple of weeks for the city of South Bend, San Joe County, uh, memorandum of understanding, whereas, uh, I'll step in and work as a COVID nineteen response coordinator. Um, additional chamber staff available, uh, where needed to, to, to pitch in and help on that effort. Uh, this is a, really a partnership. We're not asking to be compensated by the city South Bend or, or by St. Joseph County. We're simply, um, think that we can add some value here and have offered to, to do just that. Important to note that the St. Joseph County Health Department remains the primary lead on this. Obviously, they have the technical and clinical knowledge. We're really working to support messaging and coordinate some strategies, enhance communication, address logistical needs, um, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, you know, as part of this process, I'm in kind of regular and constant communication with Mayor Mueller, uh, with Commissioner Costelny, uh, with the Health Department, healthcare providers, all of those kind of folks. Um, I'm in daily communication with almost all of those. And then we're working to, on a weekly summary, uh, just kind of a high level of, of kind of some of the different efforts that are going on with that. And, uh, we'll make sure, if you didn't see that last week, that, uh, you're on that, uh, list. I would call your attention to just a couple of resources on our webpage. We've attempted to really, um, consolidate some of those resources for you, uh, to see. It's sbrchamber.com. And then the state, um, has a great dashboard of kind of what's going on at coronavirus.in.gov. Um, and then I would just encourage folks to, if you have questions, if you want to talk more, um, feel free to give me a call, email me. There's a couple of numbers. Actually, that office number is the easiest to remember for folks, so just four hundred, four thousand. If you have somebody who isn't sure where or how to plug in, uh, we'd love for, uh, you to send, um, them our way and we'll work, plug them in. You know, I want to just touch real, obviously, I'm telling you stuff that you already know, but we really have a health crisis and an economic crisis, both going on here at the same time. And obviously, the Health Department and our medical providers are doing a good job, really trying to, uh, um, assess all that. We're working with them on that, but also working on the economic crisis, as so many people now are out of work with record unemployment and many of our businesses are struggling, uh, to, to get through. Um, I will tell you, in terms of just the planning, in terms of dealing with the day-to-day stuff, I would put our county up against, uh, any in the state of Indiana in terms of, of, of how organized, how cooperative, um, those efforts, uh, are. Um, I think you already know that we have some terrific, uh, medical, uh, medical community, two great hospital systems here. Uh, other partners like Sappan Clinic and stuff who, who, uh, who really should put you at ease that, uh, that, um, that, uh, as much as we can put people at ease, that there's some really qualified folks working really hard to, um, you know, to make sure San Joe County is well-prepared and handles whatever comes next. I'd like to think we're prepared, uh, for whatever that is. However, um, there's a lot of unknowns still out there. And as you're watching the news and seeing what's going on around the country, you know that there are probably more questions than answers, and we're working to, you know, try to maybe solve as many of this as possible. Um, we're gonna get through it. We know that. Um, we're anxious. I think everybody to, to get back to life is normalcy, but we still have a little bit of time to go. And if you saw the governor's press, uh, really, or press conference today, for example, he suggested that, um, we're still, we may still be a couple of weeks away, um, from peaking in Indianapolis and we may be shortly, um, thereafter. Originally, I think there was some thought that it might peak, um, this week and, uh, based on, on current modeling, um, that could be just a little bit later than, than what we had anticipated. You know, things that are happening in the community, you've seen some news on, on a few of these things, things like testing. So, you know, it's important for you to remember that, um, that testing is, is typically if you demonstrate some symptoms. So, the advice we always say is call your doctor, uh, explain your symptoms. If you don't have a doctor, there are a number of clinics set up, uh, around, um, the area where you can go and explain your symptoms and they will test you. Um, if you look at the state data, I think it's underreporting, uh, the overall testing. I think today's number says about eight hundred people in San Joe County have been tested. Actually, that number, I think, is closer to about five thousand and we're, we're working to, uh, to figure out the, where the gap is on that testing piece. When I look at where, uh, where testing is here, uh, compared to other parts of the state, uh, we line up, uh, really almost identically with places like Fort Wayne and Evansville and, and some of those others. But we still want to make sure that, uh, that access to testing isn't, uh, a, a problem. We've worked to make sure that testing is available in all, all parts of the city and, and we really, in the last couple of weeks, have been looking at where else, um, can we, uh, test? And again, remember, right now, it's not set up where just anybody can show up, but if you have some symptoms, then I, I think that's the, that's the idea there. And we'll tell you, we made a major advance in testing in the last couple of weeks. Uh, Lev Corp in South Bend is now, um, processing some of those tests. So, our response time on tests is much better than it was a, at the beginning of this. So, we're getting tests back, you know, in a really quick, uh, timeframe. Um, you know, so, so other things happening here, I think you read before about a, you know, kind of a quarantine facility. Obviously, there are some folks that maybe test positive, don't need to be in the hospital, maybe don't want to go home and, um, potentially impact other people. So, uh, we've worked on, on a facility like that. Um, we are working on a, a model that suggests that, uh, potentially, we exceed the capacity in the hospitals and we want to be ready if that, um, if that does happen. Um, I will tell you, both hospital systems are expanding significantly within their own doors, uh, to, uh, try to handle as much of that capacity in the hospital as possible. But we will be ready with a temporary, uh, facility, uh, in, in the event that, uh, that that's needed. And we continue to work with the State Department of Health, the National Guard, Department of Homeland Security, some of those folks on, uh, on, on really getting that, um, set up and, and being ready for, uh, the peak. Um, I, I, and then I just threw you a couple of others in there. I mentioned the economic crisis that goes along with this. Um, obviously, um, the, uh, CARES Act and what came out of DC is, is put in place to, you know, kind of help businesses. We've identified a, a couple of things, though, that we think are deficiencies in that. We've been in touch with, uh, folks in DC about trying to correct that. There's some, I would call just some gaps that maybe don't, excuse me, help mom and pop businesses as well as, as we thought. But, uh, that money's starting to, uh, to come out, uh, and, and we have a, a number of businesses have been getting awards. And obviously, small businesses in particular typically have fifteen to thirty days cash on hand. So, uh, we're, we're now about four weeks of, of shutdown since April thirteenth, or May, March thirteenth was the date, I think, that, that things really started to, to change there. So, um, so, so we're really, you know, sensitive to that and helping businesses plug into those resources. And then the workforce and education piece, obviously, uh, record unemployment, you know, uh, you know, it's, 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 if you looked at the claims in San Joe County, for example, the first week of March, there were, um, I don't know, less than two hundred, I think, and there were about fifty-eight hundred, uh, last week. So, pretty significant. And, and so making sure folks, uh, plug into, to those resources and even, um, where there are some jobs. So, for example, displaced hospitality workers, we've tried to plug them in with the grocery stores, for example, who are hiring and needing folks and, and, but this is, uh, an economic crisis that will last, um, a, a little bit longer. Um, I'm sorry, I hit a wrong button there. I do want to just emphasize a couple, um, quick things. This is just something I grabbed from, uh, National Geographic and, and so you've, you've heard all of this discussion about flattening the curve. And you see, uh, this is the pandemic from nineteen eighteen and how, uh, communities did in flattening that curve. Some of those communities rushed, uh, back to normalcy a little too fast. And you saw a second, um, curve. We, uh, uh, we'd like to do whatever we can to avoid that second curve. And, uh, and so I think that, uh, obviously, the state and everybody's paying close attention to, uh, the, the steps that need to happen for, um, a recovery, uh, um, to, to happen and stuff. But this is just, this was just really telling. I don't know anything about pandemics, but this was, uh, if you learned any lessons from the one from a hundred and two years ago, um, you can see some of those communities that, uh, that, that wrestled with that. One, one other, I mentioned just the economic crisis related. This is just, uh, some information today from the National Bureau of Economic Research that, that just talked about the likelihood of some of these businesses, um, surviving, should this, uh, go on for a prolonged period of time. And again, we, we knew that some businesses would have a challenge. This was a survey, uh, from them that just sort of helped illustrate that, that says, boy, we could have some issues, um, long-term there. Um, you know, folks ask me all the time how they can help. I just think, you know, be informed and ask questions when you have questions, it certainly help. Uh, you can send people our way if they're looking at how, how do I help? Uh, my, uh, my church wants to do this, my, we want to do that. We're, we're really trying to coordinate as many of those resources with, with the, the healthcare systems and the providers. Um, obviously, we want folks to continue to follow the recommendations of the CDC and the Health Department in terms of social distancing. I know as the weather gets warmer, that's really hard, but, uh, we, we had started to see some signs of that curve of flattening, and we think that's important, uh, to continue, uh, uh, to do that. Um, and then, uh, you, you know, a, again, plug into the resources. So, the federal government really is trying to provide some relief and, and resources. Tech should hit individuals starting, uh, today, I think. And then, uh, and then some of that business money is starting to hit as, as well, too. And, and then the last thing I think is that, again, to have a lot of confidence in healthcare systems, the Health Department, our medical providers, personnel, first responders, who are all doing an amazing job on the front lines, um, combating this. Um, you know, if you saw the news yet today, but today was, uh, you know, kind of one of the more difficult days so far is, as we, uh, talked about some positive tests at a local long-term care facility. And you know that nationally, that's been a little bit of the narrative and, and, uh, um, and, uh, Mark Fox from the Health Department, uh, outlined, uh, some of those challenges. We had twenty-nine top positive tests at one of those, uh, facilities and, and obviously keeping a close eye on, on those things. My guess is, when you see the numbers tomorrow for a test in our, here in our area, they'll spike a little bit. It might be one of the larger, um, increases from day to day that, that we've seen over a period of time. But when you have a, a high concentration, obviously, um, you'll do that. Um, so, so I, 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 honestly, the next week or two could be, uh, really difficult in terms of, of, of where those numbers are. And, and we had our, another death, uh, today and, uh, I, I think we're either four or five, and I, I'm sorry, I lose track of, of that, maybe our fifth death, um, today. But, uh, um, you, you know, our healthcare providers are doing everything they can to, you know, to make sure that these folks get the care they need and hopefully, um, there's, uh, some recovery. So, um, a, anyway, I guess that, that, just a high level, I, I obviously, there's a couple of things in here probably that I, I, I can't go into great detail, uh, right at the second because of, of, of kind of the planning effort that's, uh, that's going on. But, uh, but happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Can I, um, ask some questions, uh, Mr. President?
Um, yes, and then what I want to do is go down the line. Sharon, can you, um, you can go ahead and start and then we'll, we'll, we'll move down the line.
Uh, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can, yes.
All right, sorry. Yeah, um, Sharon, we'll start with you and then we'll, we'll just work our way down the line. A couple of questions, if you could, for Jeff, and then we'll, we'll move on. Uh, at any time, you can get ahold of Jeff Ray and, and talk to him more in detail about anything. But, uh, Ms. McBride, go ahead.
Is it possible? Because I would think for the sake of the council, I would hope, uh, and Jeff may not have to answer all these now, but I would like to get the questions jotted down so we could get a response.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Sure.
Yeah, that would be good. And honestly, um, having a long debate virtually, I don't think is the, you know, or a long discussion probably isn't the best way to do it. But if we could gather questions, uh, by Wednesday, um, for Jeff, submit them to Jeff and then we can bring them back and we can post those publicly, too, if we want it.
Well, I, I totally agree, but I think a lot of times, being that we cannot meet as a full council, sometimes it's good for us to hear each other's questions. Like I said, I don't want to have a, he don't have to answer them all today, but these are questions that I really think the whole council, we benefit from knowing and could probably get more insight from each other if we hear them. If that's okay.
Sure, go.
All right, let me shoot. The first request I would ask is that if we, as the council could have, uh, the weekly updates, at least weekly. I don't know if that would be more that you're getting, um, with the healthcare, uh, uh, business and the mayor's office for us to be able to share with our constituents and to be able to lead accordingly, is the first request that I have. Um, then some other question, uh, Jeff, tell me if I'm going too fast.
You're fine.
If there any, uh, communication that you've had with any of the black, uh, leaders or, uh, community as far as outreach since it's, um, hitting the black community worldwide more than any other, uh, population? The second question. Um, I want to know the update on the homeless population status, um, that they talked about with O'Brien. I don't know where the, where we are with that. I know we have been having problems with evictions, that people are still getting evicted. And from my understanding, that should not be happening at this time. So, I would like to get an update on that. And are you all reaching out to the small businesses like the mom and pop shops? Or do they have to reach out to you in order for them to get questions or answers and assistance? And my last, uh, question is, I don't know if you know, but I also work for the county. And from my understanding with Commissioner Costelny is that he's talking about county employees going back to work on April the twenty-first. And I don't know if, since Governor Holcomb's, um, report that came out today, if that still is in effect or is that going to be backlogged? And those are the questions that I, uh, have for now. Thanks.
Great. I, I'm happy to answer some of those now, Mr. President, if you want. Um, I can go through a couple of those real quick. Uh, in terms of the black community, uh, both the healthcare providers, um, and Sappan Clinic have been the primary, uh, connection source. They have been working in particular on some additional west side, uh, testing locations. Um, I worked a, a good part of my first week trying to secure one on Western Avenue that unfortunately fell through because of, uh, uh, the property owner there. But, um, but there is, uh, testing going on now at Sister Morabranic and, uh, on Chapin Street. And, uh, and Beacon is working on an additional location, um, out on the, on the west side there. And so I'm talking about mobile, uh, mobile unit testing and so we've been working on that. And then also looking at a south side location. So, I, I'd say the primary piece of that has been just on, on, on making sure there was access to testing. Again, we, uh, the, the, the two thoughts being that it, that you go to your healthcare provider. Typically, if you don't have a healthcare provider, then there's a hotline or two-on-one will refer you to where these testing facilities are. You can go explain your symptoms and then they'll actually do a test there. Um, on the homeless, um, that, we, we have talked about an isolation slash quarantine, uh, facility. Initially, we had contemplated the O'Brien Center. We've, uh, decided on another, uh, facility. And, uh, um, I, I, I'll be honest, we, we've been somewhat reluctant to release the location primarily because of, uh, um, I, I would just call it the reputational, um, uh, piece that might go with this. So, you know, so we, we don't want this, we don't want Sharon's Hotel to now become the COVID hotel and have nobody ever want to stay there in the future because, um, because it has a reputation of, of housing patients that traditionally tested positive. Obviously, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to keep that, um, completely quiet by Wednesday of this week. That facility, uh, will be up and, up and running, but we've secured a, a, really a, a facility that, that we're able to isolate folks. Um, we've got a plan in place to, to, uh, to monitor it, to manage it, to feed the folks there and such. And, and this could be, uh, this could be a wide variety of folks. It, it could be homeless who, who have, have, uh, tested positive. Uh, but it also be, could be somebody from your family who didn't want to come back to your house and, and potentially impact the other members of your family who instead will go to that. So, uh, by Wednesday, that should, uh, that should be up and running. It's really a regional, uh, facility that were, that's aimed at how, at helping sort of St. Joe, Elkhart, Marshall, Fulton and Cosiasko Counties, um, though we think that, that largely most of that, most of the population will come from Elkhart and St. Joseph counties. And so that facility is, is, uh, i- is in the works and ready to go. Um, the eviction one is not something I've heard anything about, um, yet. And so I'd love to hear more, um, e- e- even about that. We can talk online about that, but that hasn't been on my radar necessarily as, as, uh, having been a problem, um, so far. On the small business side, I think one of the, the challenging, you know, pieces is there are fifteen to twenty thousand businesses in, in San Joe County. So, uh, having the staff and resources to reach out to every one of them is, is, we just don't have. But, uh, we're working to try to make sure that either they understand where, where the resources are, where to find them. So, so I would call it an army of folks, whether it be the city folks who are helping with, uh, the ISBDC, uh, the, uh, the, our congresspeople are obviously trying to get that message out. The chamber's trying to work on that. DTSB is trying to share that. So, we really try to enlist an army of folks to make sure that we don't miss people, uh, there. And, and, uh, and then obviously, we've been working with our media partners, too, to make sure they let folks know, um, you know, that, that those are available as, as well, too. Um, and our hope, you know, our instruction to most of them has been call your bank first, because your bank is, uh, um, is, is probably the most, uh, up to speed on this. If you don't have a regular, uh, banking partner, then there's some other great re, free resources available, uh, to folks out there. So, that's, I, I would call it a, a work in progress. And then I'd say the county date was really aimed at, um, uh, uh, what was the original guidance, I think, from the state. It's kind of a, I, I, I don't want to say it's a moving target, but I think, you know, the state has, 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 uh, has, has set some targets, usually a couple of weeks out, hoping that, uh, that we're ready to go. Um, with, with what the governor shared today, I don't think we'll be quite ready yet. And I would anticipate, I, I would anticipate that date gets extended for some period of time.
You know, I appreciate that. The last thing that I would request, President Scott, is for either, uh, Vice President White, um, as far as the residential neighbors and/or, uh, with Lori Hammond, working with her with community relations, if we can get together, because I think it's still paramount for us to have an educational piece, um, not just the testing sites with the minorities, for people to understand, uh, better, because it's hard for us to not social distance in some of the, uh, apartments and places that we live. So, I think an educational piece, because I know that Mark Carmel is also having a testing site on Wednesday, uh, free to the public as well. But we need an educational piece, um, with that. And that's all I have. I'm sorry, I have time.
Okay, and we'll, um, we'll get together on how we can, uh, proceed with committee meetings, uh, probably this way. Um, I'll talk to Mr. Palmer, figure out how we can do that and continue the communication. So, is there any other question?
Yes, President Scott, this is, um, Councilwoman Hammond. I have a question for Jeff Ray, please.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Ray, um, I'm wondering, does city, um, stop scheduling leaf pickup as of the tenth of this month? And I know personally, I have had to address burning in my own neighborhood with neighbors that are just frustrated because the city is done picking up for the spring pickup. Is there any possibility to expanding the, um, leaf pickup? So, we don't have people adding smoke and carcinogens into the air during this very difficult time?
I, I, I'm happy to talk to the administration about that. That's not something that we, we talked about previously. I know across the county, though, um, yard waste and trash has been an, an important issue because people are home, uh, so much. But yeah, I'm happy to, to talk more, uh, about that issue.
President Scott, I have a few questions. This is Rachel Thomas Morgan.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, first of all, I just want to thank you, Mr. Ray, for the- First of all, I just want to thank you, Mr. Ray, for the service that you're providing for our community and this new role that you're taking on. I have several just quick questions I'm going to tick off. The first one was, if you could, just a question I have lingering in the back of my mind, knowing that you are president and CEO of the chamber is, is what role, if any, does your board have in, in the work that you're, in the, in the work that you're doing in this particular role? Secondly, I, I, I really appreciated last week's update that you provided on the chamber, or that you pushed out from the chamber. And so glad to hear that that will be coming on a weekly basis, but also wondering if, if those weekly updates will be synced with the city's website in any way? And then also related to communications, some questions that I'm getting as an at-large member is frequency of either video updates or, or live updates, press conferences that you and, and this, the mayor may be having? And possibly a recommendation for, for more of those or on a, on a, on a regular basis? And then finally, I, I appreciate you addressing quarantine sites for the homeless. But my question is really about if there's any conversation regarding temporary housing for the homeless during this time? Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll roll through a couple of those real quick. So as far as my board, no role in this, except for my board being willing for me to devote my full-time efforts to this. So we've shifted responsibilities within my organization to some other folks. Obviously, there are some things I can't, you know, totally get rid of, but they've been supportive of that. But they are not involved in, in any decision. And in this case, it's like I work for Andy and Commissioner Costellini and the mayor, and, and I take my direction from them on, 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 you know, what needs to be done and where the priority should be and what information they need communicated. And so, but that's the, you know, kind of my folks and they've just, mine, mine have been willing to sort of say, hey, hey, go do this. This is, this is really important. If we can add value there. And my staff has stepped up the, the help and, and I draft them where I need them. If I'm just, you know, you know, I, I, you know, we, you hear the term a lot, all hands on deck. And it really is. And any of us as a community, and, and I think we might all agree that the health department is somewhat under-resourced. And so if we can help, help them on, you know, on some different things, or even the hospitals obviously are, are concerned with day-to-day care and if there are things we can help on there too. So I think that's an important piece. On the city, synced with the city website, I think that's a, a great idea. We've just done one, but I think that's, that'll be a priority to make sure that's available for all. And, and we, you know, we'd love to grow that list. We'd love you to share that list with, with whoever. And, and as you noticed, we tried to sort of hit a lot of different categories in there just because, you know, some of the people you're dealing with are worried about their business and some are worried about their home and some are worried about their job and unemployment and different things. So we wanted to just have a kind of a central resource there. But yes, we'll make sure that that happens. We do have a scheduled Friday, press conference at 1:00 on Fridays. And, and so Deputy Director Mark Fox from the Health Department really kind of covers the clinical side and then the mayor, commissioner and I participate at various times. Last week, for example, we included the Congresswoman because of, of, of the desire to better understand some of those federal programs. But we can get you, you know, the, how to log into that. You know, it's interesting between the president doing daily and the, and the governor doing daily, there's, there's not a lot of airtime, but we do think it's really critical that the community hears from the mayor and hears from Commissioner Costellini and, and the locals about, you know, kind of what's happening here locally. Because I think we have a great story to tell in terms of how organized we, we've been here. And even Governor Holcomb in his press conference earlier this week sort of praised the efforts that were happening up here in north central Indiana. And so we're excited about that. So, so watch for that on, at least on Fridays. But then I think on an as-needed basis too. So for example, this story that, that started to come out early this morning or late last night related to the long-term care facility was one that we felt like we really need to make sure that information get out, gets out there. So Mark Fox, this afternoon, did a brief press conference on, on that. So obviously, we can, we certainly can develop a list of when those things are. I mean, I'm sorry, a list more of an email saying to sort of say, hey, these updates are happening this week or we've scheduled a second one. If you want to tune into those, we'll make sure we do that. And then the last one I had, the quarantine site for the homeless and then whether any temporary housing. We've not been talking as much on the temporary housing side. I, I think that the most immediate pressing need was on that quarantine site and, and what do we do if, if someone tests positive? And that we don't want to mix back into the, and potentially impact the larger population. So there's a, a great deal of planning that's gone into just making that happen. We've been able to secure some funds that will help us pay for that facility as well. And, and then just, you know, kind of coordinate everything from how do we do meals to, just even how do we, you know, what, what happens when somebody checked out and, and what do we need to do to make the room ready for somebody else that's, that's in there. So, but, but I'll add the temporary housing onto our discussion list.
Great. I really appreciate that, Mr. Ray. Thank you so much for answering all those questions. And I, I have been able to answer for some constituents that our mayor and the health officer has been doing weekly, weekly press conferences. But I think, I think it is just a matter of communication and letting people know how to access that. And, and if we can continue to repost it somehow, be great. Thank you.
Also, Councilperson Tomas Morgan, our intern for the council is going to be working with Jeff Ray's office on this to make sure that she is pushing out that information and, and making sure that we have it. And then we can spread it to other citizens.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Councilmember Warner, you have some questions?
I have a few comments and a question. The comments, I think, are directed to you, Mr. Ray, and also the mayor and, and council leadership. One, I want to reiterate Councilmember McBride's point about trying to get us regular updates to the council. I think through this, the more information we can get, the better. Even if it's just the form of an email or, you know, some kind of update to the council, weekly if not more. And then again, as Councilmember Tomas Morgan said to the public, I've heard a lot through the last four weeks that they see the governor and the president every day and we don't hear anything from the city. I think, I, I know part of that was kind of getting things up and going. I know Fridays aren't the best day basically for always to get, you know, the news to cover your story. But I would encourage the more information that, Mr. Ray, you can get out along with the mayor. And Dr. Fox has done a good job kind of all along for the last four weeks, kind of trying to stay out in front of the story. And then I think, you know, as you said, the unemployment numbers are staggering. In the last three weeks, we've had over 14,300 county residents file new unemployment claims. And there's a lot more that are unemployed because of that. And then I was fascinated by your numbers about the businesses that we could lose and what the likelihood and probability of that is. I think at, at some point, there'll be an all hands on deck from the federal government, the state government and the local governments trying to repair this damage. And so I'm very interested in kind of having that dialogue about jobs programs and how do we keep these small businesses alive and spur new small businesses, you know, once we kind of get through this peak of the wave here? Then last, I've got, so testing, we've done very well on testing. At the beginning of this, tests were taking 12 to 14 days to come back. We had employees that were sitting for 12 to 14 days waiting for test results, not working unpaid. Now test results are about two to four days, which is drastic improvement. I did read in the Indiana Business Journal that Abbott Labs had 15 devices that can do a test in five hours and 15 of those were given to the state. I was wondering if, if we've heard of that, if we know if one of those machines is coming to our community. You know, a test result within less than 24 hours would be fantastic. And so I was wondering if you had heard about any of these machines from Abbott Labs coming to our community?
Yeah, I, I don't think we know that yet. We assume it will, being one of the, you know, we're, if you looked at the state, we're sort of one of the seven, you know, counties with the highest number of cases. And obviously, it's sort of the center of this region. We would anticipate that, you know, it was funny, originally it was 15, then it was five, then it was 15 again. And then it was the, the support material, the cartridges that went with it. They didn't have as plentiful amount of that. We're, we, we certainly have made the case that we need of those up here. The State Department of Health just hasn't really decided yet on how that is going to be allocated. And I would anticipate this week some direction on that and that likely we, we would have one of those.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. That's all I have, President Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any other questions?
This is Karen. I had a number of questions and many of which of those questions have been either asked or statements that made by Councilwoman McBride and Councilmember Warner. I do have two questions. One, the information that is being reported out is county-wide. Is there any way we could drill that down so that we know exactly what's happening within the city of South Bend? When I look at the information, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I was asking, is there any way that that county information could be drilled down in terms of what's happening in South Bend?
Um, yeah, to, to date, it hasn't been. I'll, I'll ask about that. I think that...
You know.
I, I do think though, that obviously it's, it, I mean, I think they know where it's coming from. I just haven't seen that sort of in, in any kind of report yet. But I'll, but I'll definitely ask that question.
And then the other question I have is in terms of any food disparities. Have you had a sense or you hearing anything from different areas in regards to, you know, making sure that our citizens, that they have the food that they need to move forward? At this time, you know, we have different avenues, you know, the food bank. And I do know that the city gave monies to support the various food banks. But have you had a sense from them where they're at? Do they feel that they have enough to move forward from this point?
Yeah, I, I think that's a work in progress. I think that the, the Aaron and the, the Venues Parks and Arts team have done a terrific job on the, helping on the food side. I'd also mentioned that United Way in particular and the generosity from the community has, has raised over a million dollars to help with some of those challenges. I haven't, you know, heard great, much on the specific side, obviously with so many people out of work with, with the uncertainty about when they might go back to work. There's, there's obviously a great deal of concern. And I think even as the, as the weeks go, there are going to be more and more. I don't know if you saw the news tonight even, Four Winds had to furlough their, you know, a number of their employees. Obviously, they're closed, you know, for a while. And, and so the numbers will continue to drive. And, and I would, so I would say that the tension will rise over the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, things like, that have been put in place with, with what VPA is doing and United Way, we're ready to, to handle that. The food bank's done a nice job as well. And then other, you know, local treasure like Cultivate, Cultivate Culinary are doing a nice job. They're, obviously they're not getting the banquet food like they used to, but those are some great examples there. And, and I, I would say, you know, be, help us if you hear of those things, if you, if, you know, please be, be eyes and ears, you know, for us as well too, and help us understand, you know, needs maybe out there that aren't being met or challenges that you're hearing of. We'd love to take those back.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I'll just email you some additional questions or concerns.
Hey, Karen.
Any other questions?
Karen?
Yes?
This is Henry. And I wanted to ask you and Sharon, did you guys find that website that Tim sent us or sent me on an email to be helpful with your questions that you're asking?
Yes, some, but still I think that I looked at those and I've been sending helpful websites and also looking at the various posters and, you know, links. But, you know, I think having a conversation is important and you get to hear from other council members. But Tim did send me that information.
Yeah. So do you think it would be prudent on the, on the end of the council to develop a, a piece that they can, I guess, market to the rest of the community, the community that we serve with the information that Jeff is giving us right now and the information that we know about this coronavirus and testing sites and just the things that we are asking updates on? So the, the council itself can send out a, a press release or develop a poster or do both in order to make sure that the communication is being aired out, not only to us, but also to the people that we serve?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
I, I think that would be a great idea.
I think that'd be great to get partnered with the intern with doing that as well. That'd be great.
Yep, that, that's the plan.
The only thing I would, I just might suggest again, just on the, especially on the testing piece. And I think there, I don't, not, there's a, a sensitivity, because I think everybody's got tested that needs to get tested. But, but facilities aren't set up yet for the people who just want to be tested to go get tested, right? You, you really need to demonstrate some system. So, so we just want to be, be careful that whatever message goes out helps them to understand that, boy, yeah, please, if you're symptomatic, we absolutely want you to do this. And, and you can do that at, at places like Morabranic or you mentioned Mount Carmel. And I, I think there's some, some other options, you know, working in, in that general area as well.
Yeah, I don't think we need to reinvent the information coming out, but the, the way to disseminate it and spread it to parts of our city that might not be in tune with everything else that's going on from the health department. So.
President Scott, I just, this is Rachel Tomas Morgan again. I just want to piggyback on your comment and, and, because I appreciate that. I really do think in times like this, it's important to have one unified message and that the information is consistent. And so the ways that we can, you know, help circulate what has already been developed in, or push out your weekly updates or wherever else, and the mayor's, I think that would be the best course of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from this council from Mr. Ray?
Just real, real quick, President Scott.
Yes, sir.
So first, just a, a quick comment. And Mr. Ray, thank you for, for being with us tonight and, and giving us an update. When Mayor Mueller told me that, that you were going to step into this role, I was extremely comforted and, and just knowing your, your capability and, 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 and so just thank you for, for stepping in like this. My question, my only question, I think one thing that we didn't touch on that, that tonight was contact tracing. How are we doing on contact tracing, if at all? I know, you know, Governor Holcomb's press conference today talked about, right? I mean, we're doing a lot of things here in this first quarter. Second quarter is going to be heavily reliant on contact tracing to make sure we contain this thing.
Yeah, I, I would just suggest we're in the early stages of this. I think this was really starting to get traction the end of last week. And so we've had some initial discussion about just the, the tools and resources that are available to us here to really help with that. And it is on the agenda this week, you know, sort of at the end of the week, I kind of put a list of what are the things that we need to make sure we talk about next week. And that definitely is on, on our list this week. And so though I don't have enough much to report now, I would think by, by the end of the week or the, or even the first of next week, we'll, I'll, I'll have a much better feel for that. We started to study, for example, what other, what other the communities are doing, how it's working, that, that kind of thing. And we, and then we've been working on just this thought process of how do we, you know, how do we do it? Or how do we even employ, you know, some of the brain power that we have around here to help us make sure that, that we do that effectively? But yeah, so just early stages, but definitely, you know, it's kind of interesting because, you know, we sort of have the, the critical, immediate needs and then kind of the, the long-term, you know, also on our list, you know, related to how to get the economy back in order and how do we make sure we don't have that second spike and how do we track that? So definitely on our, on our list of things that, that we'll talk more about in the future.
Great. Yeah, and thank you. And just since you mentioned the economy, the economic piece again, just working for a financial institution, I can tell you, we've all been quickly becoming payroll protection plan experts and fielding calls. The demand is astronomical. So I'm not sure what that means. I know we, we hear about a second wave coming, but, but thank you for all that you're doing to point our small businesses in the right direction on those resources.
And I'll just mention it, Jake, since you mentioned it. So we, we do anticipate Congress coming back together. They're kind of at an impasse on this. We're, we're thinking it may be early May before they potentially get back to... They're kind of at an impasse on this. We're, we're thinking it may be early May, uh, before they potentially get back together. But we do know, um, that demand will far out, uh, uh, or, um, exceed the dollars, uh, that are available. So, you know, kind of our daily, uh, conversation is with our congressional representatives to make sure they go back. We've also identified what we think are some deficiencies in some of those programs that have, have left behind some small businesses that thought that maybe, uh, they were going to benefit more in the EEIDL, uh, program, for example. So we're, you know, a, a piece of our effort is just, you know, kind of lobbying on those things to make sure that folks who thought they were going to take advantage really can, um, especially if another wave comes and we fix some language there.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, no, I, I, I wanted to ask a couple of questions, not necessarily, uh, Jeff. I think Jeff has done a great job and thank you, Jeff, for participating. I want to ask that, um, that there is a council member that participates on that county task force. Um, I think Rachel made it, uh, um, mentioned that the, the conversation or the message needs to be in unison. And I agree. I, I think that we all need to speak clearly in one voice. However, the county is not as diverse as the city is. And so the county is not necessarily interfacing with the cities. So the information is being disseminated through city outlets or city council people for that, for, for example. So it will be prudent on our end to, uh, to have a member of the South Bend City Council participate on that task force. And also that we do, uh, disseminate our own information so that, uh, our constituents who are in more of a different, um, uh, uh, life, um, uh, different level of life than in a city than there are in the county. So I think it'll be gracious on our end to make sure we including, we are including everybody that we can. Uh, we just can't say, hey, county delivered this a poster and we're going to put it out. That doesn't work. Most of the businesses that Jeff is, are, is talking about, a lot of them are in downtown South Bend. That's not a county issue. That's a city issue. And so we need to be mindful of the people that we are serving.
Understood, Henry. Yeah, we, we can, we can talk to the county and, and get more participation with that. Okay, with that, um, thank you, Mr. Ray, for, for joining us. We appreciate it. We look forward to updates from you, um, as, uh, the Fridays roll along. And anything else that comes out during the middle of the week, we appreciate that. All right, um, with that, we're going to move on to the rest of our council meeting. So thank you. Mr. Palmer, I think, uh, fresh, refresh my memory, we, uh, give reading to the first readings and then we send them to the committee of the whole is the motion, I believe?
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Jones, would you please give first reading to 1620?
Yes. 1620, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, adding chapter five, article 10, section 5 dash 125 to the South Bend municipal code to suspend municipal code sections 5 dash 38A2, 5 dash 96B, and 5 dash 97.5 for the duration of any stay at home or similar order for any declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
I move that, uh, this bill will be sent to the committee of the whole for second, or sorry, for, I guess, for a second reading here, uh, tonight.
Thank you. Uh.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. All in favor will do roll call. Ms. Jones?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis?
Aye. Your, your microphone is going out at times, so I, I can't, it's fine though. I, I got it. Aye.
Okay. Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye. And Ms. Jones, when you face your computer, we can hear you better than when you're looking away. And I know you're juggling paperwork, so.
Yeah, okay. I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones, would you please give first reading to 1720?
1720, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, adding chapter two, article six, section two dash 84.17 to the South Bend municipal code to suspend municipal code sections 2 dash 84.13, 2 dash 84.14, and 2 dash 84.15 for 60 days due to the declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
I move that 1720 also be sent to our committee of the whole for, uh, hearing, uh, this evening.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Ms. Jones, please roll call.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Would you please give first reading to 1820?
1820, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, adding chapter 21, article 13, section 21 dash 12 point 04D to the South Bend municipal code to suspend municipal code sections 21 dash 12 point 04B3 and 21 dash 12 point 04G for the duration of any stay at home or similar order for any declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I move that 1820 also be sent to our committee of the whole for our, uh, reading and hearing this, uh, this evening.
Second.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Yes. Um, Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. I entertain a motion. Join the committee of the whole.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, Ms. Jones?
Okay. Um. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Warner?
Think we might've lost him.
Okay. Uh, I'm not sure how to mark that. Um, Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
President Scott? President Scott?
Aye.
Okay.
Would you please, would you please call, um?
Warner, yeah. Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Warner?
If I may interject, I'm sorry, um, Troy just got booted out and he's coming back in. So I'm working with him to try to get back in. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, we'll hold.
Believe it or not, his, um, pet decided to restart. Um, so he is restarting it right now.
Oh, really?
Um.
You know, I don't, I don't.
There's Mr. Warner on his dial-up.
All right, uh, all of a sudden it decided it needed to do an update and shut down and kicked me out. So I'm an aye.
Okay, nine ayes.
It's a record long aye. Okay. Um, Ms. McBride, I'll turn it over to you for committee hall.
Thank you so much. The committee of the whole is now in session. This portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with the public that the bills that have been given a second, that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and results their discussion. Ms. Jones, would you please give Bill 1620 a second reading?
Yes. 1620, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, adding chapter five, article 10, section 5 dash 125 to South Bend municipal code to suspend municipal code sections 5 dash 38A2, 5 dash 96B, and 5 dash 97.5 for the duration of any stay at home or similar order for any declaration of a local disaster emergency virus disease 2019.
Thank you so much. Is there a committee report? And a petitioner?
Yes, uh, the, uh, Bill 1620 was, uh, held a hearing in the Health and Public Safety Committee earlier this evening and comes out of that committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much. Um, I forgot to ask you to state your name and address, sir. Mr. Warner?
Uh, yes, my name is Troy. Well, I'm not, this isn't, I was just giving the committee report, uh, we will start with petitioner.
Who's the petitioner for 1620?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan, is it?
1620 is the animal welfare.
No, 1720.
1620, uh, no, 1620 is the animal welfare.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I apologize. I got the numbers mixed up. So this is a, uh, bill that basically, uh, suspends a couple of requirements of the Animal Welfare Commission. Those requirements are that, uh, the commission holds a hearing within 10 days of it making a determination that a citizen's, uh, animal is vicious or dangerous. Um, this would suspend that requirement during the stay at home order. And then the second determination is that the, uh, Animal Control Welfare Commission must hear, hear any appeal within 10 days. This would also suspend that requirement during the period of the stay at home order. Uh, my name is Troy Warner. I have offices in the county city building downtown on the fourth floor.
Thank you so much. Committee, is there any questions for the petitioner?
No questions.
No questions.
Any other, other council members?
If I may, Councilman, um, Warner, can you tell me, um, what happens to the animals in the interim if a public decision cannot be made?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Mr. Warner, can I chime in on that?
Certainly.
If they're being held, um, at Animal Care and Control or, um, all staffs, does not change. So if they're being held, they're held until there's a hearing. Animal Care Control would take care of them. Uh, if they're with whomever, they stay with whomever until the hearings are, are done.
Okay, so none of the animals would be destroyed prior to a hearing?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. Now, at this time, um, Attorney Palmer, I'm not going to public comment, or am I?
No, you're not.
Thank you so much. At this time, uh, I was sending this to the, uh, council and asking for them to entertain a motion for passage.
I'll, uh, make a motion to send 1620 to the full council favorably.
Is there a second? Ms. Jones, could you please form the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Council, Vice President White? Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Uh, Bill 1620 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mrs. Jones, would you please give Bill 1720 a second reading?
Yes. 1720, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of South Bend, Indiana, adding chapter two, article six, section 2 dash 84.17 to the South Bend municipal code to suspend municipal code sections 2 dash 84.13, 2 dash 84.14, and 2 dash 84.15 for 60 days due to the declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
Thank you so much. There was a committee report. If not, at this time, I would like to, uh, need someone to entertain a motion, please, for passage.
I'll make motion to send 1720 to the full council favorably.
I will second that motion.
All in, please the roll. Clark Jones?
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nyskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jones, will you please give Bill 1820 a second reading?
Yes. Public, Bill 1820, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, Adding Chapter 21, Article 13, Section 21-12.04D to the South Bend Municipal Code to Suspend Municipal Code Sections 21-12.04B3 and 21-12.04B6G for the duration of any stay-at-home or similar order or any declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
Thank you so much. There was a committee report and for the zoning and annexation this afternoon, and I will turn it over to our petitioner, President Tim Scott.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Tim Scott, 711 Forest Avenue, um, along with Sharon McBride as sponsors of this bill. Um, this, like the other two before us, uh, suspends Historic Preservation Commission from doing any CVA's, which is the certificate appropriateness, or, uh, having any hearing meetings, uh, related to historic preservation. Again, um, keeping all, uh, meetings and gatherings of people, um, from happening while the stay-at-home order is in place or is a local disaster emergency. So, again, this is the same as before. I'd like to thank, uh, Councilperson Hammond for bringing up the question about there is a Historic Preservation, uh, Appeal Hearing that we were supposed to hear about a month ago. Uh, that also is put on hold. I know the, uh, residents also, uh, wanted delays on this as well, but that is all put on hold, hold until we rescind this, uh, bill. And that is my presentation. And any questions?
Thank you so much. If there's no other questions or comments, um, I will entertain a motion regarding Bill 1820. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to send Bill 1820 to full council with a favorable recommendation. Second.
Jones, the roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nyskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
I will entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and report back to the full council.
So move. I second.
Those in favor? What? I need the roll call. I'm sorry.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nyskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We are now back in full council. Ms. Jones, would you please give third reading to 19, I'm sorry, 1620?
1620. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, Adding Chapter 5, Article 10, Section 5-125 to the South Bend Municipal Code to Suspend Municipal Code Sections 5-38A2, 5-96B, and 5-97.5 for the duration of any stay-at-home or similar order or any declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nyskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, would you give your third reading to 19, I'm sorry, 1620?
1620. Third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, Adding Chapter 5, Article 10, Section 5-125 to the South Bend Municipal Code to Suspend Municipal Code Sections 5-38A2, 5-96B, and 5-97.5 for the duration of any stay-at-home or similar order or any declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nyskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, would you give your third reading to 1720?
1720, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, Adding Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 2-84.17 to the South Bend Municipal Code to Suspend Municipal Code Sections 2-84.13, 2-84.14, and 2-84.15 for 60 days due to the declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
Move for passage of Bill 1720?
Second.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nyskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 1820, please.
1820, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, Adding Chapter 21, Article 30, Article 13, Section 21-12.04D to the South Bend Municipal Code to Suspend Municipal Code Sections 21-12.04B3 and 21-12.04B6G for the duration of any stay-at-home or similar order or any declaration of a local disaster emergency resulting from coronavirus disease 2019.
Move for passage of Bill 1820? Second.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Nyskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions. Ms. Jones, would you please read 2006?
Resolution 2006, A resolution on behalf of the South Bend Common Council consenting to the renewal or continuance of a declaration of a local disaster emergency until any order or proclamation lawfully terminates the local disaster emergency or the passage of a resolution by the Common Council revoking this consent.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
I'm the sponsor of the bill. President Scott, shall I comment?
Well, if we can get the committee report, do we lose Mr. Warner again?
The Health and Public Safety Committee held a hearing earlier this evening, and the bill comes from the committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Ms. Tomas Morgan, you can go ahead and start.
Thank you. I'm Rachel. Rachel Tomas Morgan, um, reporting here from 114 Chapin Street. Um, as we know, at our last council meeting, we, um, we passed a resolution for the renewal or continuance of the declaration of, uh, local disaster emergency until the next full council meeting. Given the continuing, given the continuing, uh, nature of this pandemic and the significance of staying vigilant to the current mitigation efforts currently in place, this resolution 20-06 extends this period of time until there is a lawful termination of the local disaster emergency or until this council revokes this consent.
Thank you, Ms. Tomas Morgan. Are there any questions from council? Seen or hearing none?
Yeah, I was trying to get in. I'm sorry. I was trying to get in. Um, a question, n-n- maybe you can answer this. Uh, is there any way that we can put anything in place, uh, so like when the ban is lifted by the governor, everything goes back to what we're used to? Um, I can only imagine going to another meeting, uh, once the ban is lifted and we have to go back through all of these actions to, uh, recreate or, or to restart business as usual, unless I'm wrong.
No, we, oh, go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
Oh, I was going to say, I was going to defer to, um, um, Attorney Palm, Palmer, but I understand that that's what this resolution actually does say, um, that it would terminate, um, uh, when there's lawful termination of the.
So, well, there's a lot to go for you there, uh, Rachel. So, everything that we do, we're doing right now, um, like opening up and, and allowing the administration to work without council, all those things per your resolution, once this voted through, uh, for the final time, will make sure that it goes back to normal or business as usual. So, that's what we're voting on. Cause I didn't understand it that way.
I, I'm sorry. I have some, um, feedback. I'm having a hard time hearing you, Councilman Davis, but this, uh, this, this resolution, I, I believe is read that, is understood in that way.
If, if I could, with the exception of the tax abatement, which only extends the, um, suspension for 60 days, everything else goes back to the way it was, um, upon termination of either the local disaster emergency or the stay-at-home order, whichever would be later.
Okay, thank you. I was, I, I wasn't clear and I, I read through it and I guess I just didn't miss, didn't understand it properly. So, I got to thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing done. Um, I'll entertain a motion, 2006.
So move?
Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nyskowski?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for attending this. I think we made, uh, history, actually. I think this is the first time the city councils ever met virtually and, uh, I hope we don't have to do it again. Um, everybody stay healthy and safe and your family and the entire city. So, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, everybody. Thank the communities.
Good night, everybody. Thanks, Ms. Jones, and your clerk's office for helping out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Especially Bianca, cause I was stuck, okay? Thank you so much.
And City IT.
Everybody say, say, and safe, okay?
Have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye.